True.
True, hey, what's up?
All right, call this meeting back to order.
I couldn't tell. All right, there we go. Good, good evening. My name's Jason Ness and Amanda Poncy's here with me. We're gonna run through shared dockless mobility devices, also known as scooters. We've got a short presentation and then happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Our goals really are twofold tonight. One is just to obviously provide an update on the pilot program that we've had, but also we're here to request an extension with a few modifications for the pilot program and extend that through December of this year. The main reason is due to new state legislation that discusses operations and how localities need to implement the right-of-way rules and we request a little bit more time to understand those impacts in Charlottesville. But quickly, just the background. Obviously, a temporary pilot was passed proactively to allow scooters in Charlottesville. We've had two companies operating and again, the state legislation impacted our kind of our decision-making on how we're moving forward with this program. The quick update on regulations and to recap what we planned, we're 200 maximum scooters. We've now gone up to 225. We requested public data access. We've had a strong partnership with UVA. We've put a lot of time and effort into no-go and slow-go zones on the mall and we'll talk a little bit more about those and then also working with the companies to have low-income programs for residents in Charlottesville. The key findings, people are pretty engaged about the right-of-way. We've had a lot of comments in support of scooters, obviously not liking scooters, but a lot of neutral parties just with their thoughts and ideas on house. The city should regulate safety, how the city should regulate right-of-way and personal property rights and so it's been interesting to kind of hear well-thought-out comments around those topics. Also, the term pilot allowed us to quickly change and improve the scooter program as we saw different things that were impacting both positively and negatively scooters in Charlottesville. Ridership has been pretty high, we'll cover those numbers in a second, but we're starting to see the goal of bringing scooters to Charlottesville and that's helping with short-trip mobility, replacing car trips and walking. And then, a lot of what you'll see from one of the requests, but Bird and Lime are two distinct companies and have used up a lot of our time in dealing with them in different aspects. It's been, I primarily worked with Bird and Amanda's dealt with Lime and that has been very time-intensive to work through kind of their layers of staff and how they operate. The statistics, so we've, we're probably closer to 120,000 rides at this point. We've had this slide from last week. I think what's interesting is when you consider the number of rides divided by the number of days in operation, it's 700 rides per day on 200 vehicles, which usually there's about 175 deployed. So when you consider snow and rain and thunderstorms, 700 rides is quite a bit of rides for just 200 vehicles. There's been about 20,000 unique riders, meaning people have downloaded the app and used it. There's a little bit of overlap with the companies, but not a lot. And then, the rides and parking, we analyze about 100,000 detailed GPS coordinates of rides. One of the concerns we had were people parking kind of on the corners of blocks in those yellow bumpy strips called truncated domes. We haven't seen a lot of rides ending there. We were surprised at the low number of rides ending in the kind of the commercial corridor, which is from the downtown mall to the corner. 5% of rides have gone through the no-go zones and then 50% of rides end in near UVA, which is not surprising. Travel and safety, the busiest time of day is usually in the evenings from 5 o'clock till around 10:00. The slowest time is around early mornings from 6:00 to 9:00. The average strip has gone up since the students have left. It was just under 5 or .5 miles and now it's getting close to .7 miles and we have worked with UVA, the ER UVA, to get the reports of accidents. There's been 32, which is not a lot considering there's been 120,000 rides, but of those 32, some have been fairly serious. The complaints, we've tracked that through the MySevo app. We have an email address, dockless@charlottesville.org, phone calls and other ways to get ahold of us.
That's really helpful.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Blocking access has been the most commented on. That's mostly to do with perpendicular parking on sidewalks or parking the sidewalk, or parking the scooter right in the middle of the sidewalk. It's not necessarily blocking a corner or a signal. The other category was the second most popular and that has to do with night riding, drivers and vehicles feeling uncomfortable and then kind of going back to the thoughts about how governments should regulate private companies. The challenges, we've had just a few. The initial deployments, there's our, those are pictures of the operators for both companies setting out scooters when they first started. We've worked with the companies to go to more, instead of a GPS-based deployment, a more common-sense-based deployment and have seen improvements with that. The technology, there's screenshots from Lime and Bird of the downtown mall. The technology has kind of been known, like a no-go, sometimes go with how the technology's worked. It hasn't always worked. It has not worked consistently at UVA and Barracks Road Shopping Center and on the mall and that's something that we're still continuing to work with. Some other challenges have been the smaller market. We only have 200 devices. A lot of larger cities have thousands of devices, so the time working with Bird and Lime staff has been more challenging to get responses to some of our issues and questions. Rider education, where it comes to responsible parking and safe riding and then equitable deployment. We would like to see scooters more spread out through the city, but at the end of the day or midday, when most of the scooters at UVA, it doesn't allow for the neighborhoods to access these devices.
So having the pilot framework in place has provided staff with flexibility in addressing the various challenges that have arisen from an emerging technology. The permit regulations were a good starting point, but they didn't address every issue. So, for example, to address the concerns about downtown mall riding, we've installed temporary signage reminding users to walk their wheels. Our communications office has created a video demonstrating proper parking and regularly posted on social media about scooter etiquette. Staff also worked closely with companies to include Charlottesville-specific in-app messaging to encourage better behavior and we also worked closely with UVA to understand user and non-user feedback and perceptions on the program. So the survey was a joint effort with UVA's School of Architecture, Urban and Environmental Planning practicum program and we collected nearly 3,000 responses between March and May of 2019 to get feedback on travel behaviors as well as perceptions. And we received a pretty good mix of both user and non-user feedback, so you can see we got 43% of respondents had ridden a scooter, whereas 56% had not. We wanted to find out a little bit about why people are choosing to take an e-scooter and based on the respondents from users, 30% said it was the fastest and most reliable form of transportation for that particular trip compared to 22%, which was the next highest, which was just for fun. We also wanted to find out a little bit more about what purpose the trip was serving, their most recent e-scooter trip and when you add up all of the different commute trips to and from work, to classes or school or to a work-related meeting, nearly 50% were work-related trips, which was pretty interesting to us. We also asked what mode the trip was replacing if a scooter were not available for that trip and the vast majority, 55%, were walking trips, which I think is a little disappointing for those of us who are more pedestrian inclined, but I think one of the things that was very interesting was the fact that nearly 28, 27% did, were personal vehicle trips, whether, sorry, vehicle trips, whether it was a personal vehicle or a taxi or ride-hailing service. So I do think there is some potential opportunity as far as reducing traffic congestion with scooters in Charlottesville. We also wanted to, you know, compare the user and non-user perceptions and of course, feedback on this program is a mixed bag, which you can see here in this graph. It's positive for those who are using the scooters, it's viewed as a negative for non-users, but both of the parties have concerns about scooters continuing in Charlottesville, whether it's for blocking access or need for better protected infrastructure, wearing helmets, things like that. But overall, three-quarters of survey respondents want the program to continue with some conditions. In addition to the survey, we also did some observational studies. Both staff and UVA students helped us to, you know, just better understand user behavior and what we found was that most users were riding Limes. They were primarily males, 18 to 30, based on our observations, but despite our safety outreach, 21% were riding on sidewalks, 15% wore headphones and zero were wearing helmets. So, in the six months that the program has been in place, we've learned a few things. I think the most notable is that active program management is, and partnership with the companies is really important. There were a lot of requirements that we set forth in our permit, but really needed the active engagement of staff to help see those through. For example, you know, we have a data, open data requirement in our, in our permit regulations, but we're still working with the staff to get that available to public. We also have found that while outreach was something, education and outreach generally, but also very specifically to low-income users was outlined and specified without us sort of leading the charge and encouraging them to participate in certain events, those things aren't happening necessarily just by the companies doing it on their own. We also learned that the limited fleet size has allowed us to effectively understand the impacts in Charlottesville, but it has come at a cost of not being able to serve all areas of the community. And lastly, technology is not a panacea. We need the infrastructure, education and enforcement needed to be able to encourage positive riding behavior. So as Jason mentioned, we do, we would like to extend this pilot through December 18th of this year to plan for our newly-enabled state legislation that basically requires that programs or cities have a program in place. Otherwise, we'd be in the same position that we were in last July where companies could come in and operate without any regulation. We would like to increase the fleet to no more than 300 total scooters to help with our equity and distribution goals and we're also recommending that we hire a part-time staff using the funds that were collected from the permit fees to really help implement the outreach campaign, have ongoing coordination with UVA, refine our regulations based on the lessons learned and evaluate the program based on our comprehensive plan goals. So with that, we'll take questions, but before we do, I do just want to say a quick thank you to, you know, the other staff who have helped us with this program. You've primarily seen Jason and I, but Sebastian Waismann in the City Attorney's Office has been really instrumental in helping us understand some of the nuances with the different legislation. The Communications Department has helped a lot with getting messaging out. We have a data analysis team that helped with the graphs and all the survey data, Steve Hawkes, Cole Songer, Bob Brown, Lucas Lyons and then partners at UVA in Parking and Transportation, the Office of the Architect and also in the Emergency Department, so.
So I have two questions. Do you know the dollar amount for the part-time staff member? No?
I don't think we discussed that yet.
Okay. And then, have there been any individuals who've been, received any kind of negative, like charges for anything related to scooter, so there haven't been any criminal?
Are you talking about riding or like vandalism?
Yeah, or...
From our understanding, the companies really don't pursue
Okay.
Any type of vandalism or when scooters go missing, they just kind of write it off.
Okay.
Have they been being thrown off of buildings? Have you heard that rumor?
I have not heard that rumor.
What did you think?
They've been thrown off of buildings? Been into lakes?
I have seen them thrown into the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
That's pretty bad. I do have a couple of questions, so, thank you for this and it, my class was the one, was the one team that had this and they were so enthused about this project. They really were very, very into it, big time and so thank you for that experience of them. But I do want to emphasize too that there was a lot of concern about the sustainable aspects of this, these devices. They're easily thrown away, they just can add to the landfill. The batteries are pretty toxic when they're completely used up. And I have read about solar-powered scooters and is that something that could be looked into as part of the next phase of this and also whether these can be, are there models coming out that are more recyclable, that are more durable, that are not going to be so easily thrown away, discarded? That, that's the big concern I have is just this one more piece of junk that we don't know what to do with when it's outlived its useful life.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a question that a lot of cities are trying to understand and it's definitely something that as part of our comprehensive plan goal evaluation, we can
Okay.
Try to put a metric to.
And then, when we get to December, then what is that next step?
The goal would be to have a full program where we understand all the different parts of the bill that generally passed. There was, there were some, some things dealing with trails and private scooters and right-of-way that we've seen a little bit of, but I don't think we've had time to kind of get deep into that. And so we, we try, what we would like to do is just come back with the full plan to get passed.
Like to implement us?
Yes.
Has there been discussion of figuring out how much carbon is being avoided being produced as our way of tying, linking this up with the discussion we're having with, with Crystal and her shop? Because we just got briefed on that. It would seem like to be a one, a terrific part of our strategy, like for presumably and we could, you know, because the data you have is so good.
So both companies provide access to their dashboards where they track different metrics. Bird, one of their metrics is pounds of CO2 reduced, I think. I don't, I don't know how they come up with that figure, so, preface it by that, but we...
Coefficient.
Right, but, but Bird does track that.
Great. I just think that it would be smart to include this and it's, because we know that we want to move on that, on that front.
And do you have equal proportions of the devices for each company? I thought that metric on how many more are riding Lime, I just didn't understand that. Like what's driving that?
Lime's authorized 125 devices, Bird's authorized 100. I guess it's consumer preferences.
Okay. Okay. So, there's a motion?
Is there a motion?
We adapt a resolution of the Charlottesville City Council extending the bicycle and e-scooter sharing system, otherwise known as Dockless Mobility Pilot Program until December 18th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report participatory budgeting.
Ooh, still into the range, 11:30. That was my under.
Hello.
Good evening, hello. I do have a short PowerPoint just to kind of summarize the report that I sent out, so I'm gonna talk fast. So, I just wanted to go over some highlights of where we are with this process and the purpose of tonight is just to get your feedback and thoughts and then to kind of bless this going forward, if you all are okay with that, so. So, we'll start with a little bit of background, what it is, what types of projects we're talking about, the recommended geographical area that our committee came up with, proposed timeline and roles and responsibilities. And all this is much more detailed than the report that we had put together. So as part of the fiscal year 19 adopted budget, City Council set aside $100,000 for a pilot program to do the city's first participatory budgeting process and the goal of this was to figure out or pilot new ways to engage the community, residents and to empower citizens to determine where some public dollars are going. $100,000 seemed like a good start. We always wanted to call it a pilot to keep it small. So we have a steering, we had a steering committee meet between December, I actually think we started in November through April. It consisted of city staffs and community members and other stakeholders and then we worked with Flora Cain, remember I came to you last fall and we worked with Flora Cain, who was a professional, Ebony Walden worked with us, their facilitator and they helped us put together this report. And then we wanted the PB process to look like the local community, so there's a lot of models out there and there's actually kind of a national model out there and we did look at that, but we wanted this to look like the city of Charlottesville, so hopefully that's what we're bringing forward. So, participatory budgeting or PB is a democratic process, again, which gives folks the empowerment to spend a portion of the budget. There's over 3,000 across the world practicing PB, 3,000 participatory budget processes. So we have a steering committee that oversees the process. Residents come together, they submit and brainstorm ideas and submit proposals. There's a proposal design team, they take those ideas, they make them into valid proposals that can then be voted on. Residents also vote on those proposals and then we'll, we would come back to you all to kind of give you that final recommendation and then we would go forth and implement that. And then the steering committee would continue that work actually year-round just to continue to monitor that project and how that's going and then to start the cycle over again, if, learn lessons from the product, from the cycle that we just finished and then take that to the next year. So, we're talking about capital projects mostly at this point. That's what our steering committee is recommending. As you know, these are one-time expenditures. They involve physical infrastructure. We didn't feel that we would want to do something that would be, have an ongoing operational aspect to it, so capital projects seem to be the way to go in this case. And one idea that's really important here, as I'll talk about this in a minute, is the proposal design team is to make sure that whatever those ideas are that come together as projects truly are capital in nature and so they would help kind of define that as well and to frame those in a way where they could actually be done and implemented. And we'd make sure that there are no legal issues, for instance, or that it's not on private property, so that's some of the work the proposal design team would do. So the geographical area that our committee is recommending is the Ridge Street neighborhood and several of us actually live in that neighborhood and so we could speak pretty definitively that it's not been as active as the neighborhood, I think, in the past and that we wanted to better advocate for this neighborhood as a city and we wanted to try to elevate their needs and we thought that doing Ridge Street as a pilot would be the way to do that. It's also within the strategic investment area and there's three public housing sites and Friendship Court within the Ridge Street neighborhood. We looked at some data as well in the 2018 National Citizen Survey. We thought this was really interesting. 74% of residents felt positively about the neighborliness of their community compared to 64% of all city residents and 81% felt safe in their neighborhoods compared to 76 of all city residents. Under the census data, there's 40% homeowner, resident homeowners compared to 9% in Fifeville Prospect and 30% in Ridge Street are considered in poverty compared to 25% citywide. And the other thing that we thought was interesting is 13% have moved in the last year, which is low compared to the other two areas mentioned, which is Fifeville Prospect, which means, it said, what that said to us is there's stability in the neighborhood, which is good for a project like this. We thought that was a positive aspect. And then the Latino population is much higher than the other areas as well. So, these are just some of the things we looked at to choose Ridge Street. I mean, this is obviously a pilot. We didn't want to stretch it too thin, it's only $100,000, so that's why we're only recommending this one area at this time. Now, depending on how this first year goes, we could possibly do more than one area, but we felt like given the resources we'd have on staff and kind of the energy we could put behind this to make this a really good win, that just choosing this one area would be the best option for now. So here's our timeline, our proposed timeline. So between August and October, we would do education and idea collection and these would just, again, just focus on the Ridge Street neighborhood, so when I say geographical focus, that's what I'm talking about now. So we, they learned more about the process, they start sharing ideas at neighborhood meetings, outreach booths and online and then we'd start securing community volunteers. By the way, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, community volunteers also mean staff volunteers and at the employee bizarre day we had a few months ago, over 40 city employees signed up to be part of this process, which is really cool, so excited about that. Between November and February would be proposal development and this seems like a long time, but the reason we kind of spread it out was because this is in the middle of the budget process. We didn't want to get it confused with that process or kind of have them too intertwined because they really are separate processes. So that's the time that the proposal design team will do their work, work with the subject matter experts in the city, figure out which ideas can actually be developed into proposals and be put on a ballot. April would be voting, again, that's after the budget is done, again, to keep it separate from the budget proposal, plus the staff time that we're gonna need to do this. It's gonna be hard for me to be freeing a budget staff to do this type of work in the middle of the budget. So we'd vote in April and then after that would be implementation. We'd come to you first, obviously, to kind of tell you where we landed with this and then we would implement the project and we would have communication and updates sent out on the project and to the public. So here's some of the roles and responsibilities that we identified. Of course, the community members, which are the folks in the Ridge Street neighborhood. We want them to speak up, be creative, volunteer on teams, share feedback, inspire and vote. As City Council, what you could do is be support, you could be the cheerleaders, you could attend events, engage the community, announce events, et cetera. The proposal design team, I talked about a little bit, so they're really kind of putting the ideas together into a formal proposal and those include staff. We talked a lot about how do we get youth involved, so we're gonna have a youth component to this. Residents and community partners. City staff, I mentioned before that 40 staff members, city staff members volunteered to help with PB, so they can help be on various teams such as marketing, communications, outreach engagement, technical support. For instance, we had several volunteers from the Voting Register's office and they're gonna actually help us come up with the balloting concept for the voting, so we're really excited about that. The steering committee, which is kind of the, kind of the group over this whole process, is gonna continue to design and build the PB process and they'll provide support to all the areas and they'll also continue, they'll continue to be a year-round group that will meet even after the process is over to kind of refine the process for the next round. And then you have numerous volunteers and community partners and one thing I've learned in being more exposed to this is how many people for this to be successful it will take, especially in the community. And we've already identified several members of the community that live in the Ridge Street neighborhood who we think would be happy to be engaged in this, so after tonight, we'll be reaching out to those folks to get them engaged as well and involved. So that is my summary. Again, that's just a very high level of the report that we provided to you and this is, I'll just say this, this has kind of been a fluid process for us to get to this point and as we go through this process in the next nine months, it will continue to be fluid as we learn and we're, you know... and we're, you know, figuring things out as we go forward. Matt Slats in the audience is here. He's been serving on the team as a community member, so he's been invaluable to this process. But we're growing the steering committee as well, so we even have more people on the steering committee than we had before. And we've got, and we're gonna be reaching out to more community members to add them to the steering committee as well. So, I'm happy to ask any questions or answer any questions and accept any input or feedback that you all have.
In terms of the data, I think the MAP to Health, if I'm remembering correctly, and I think I am, the Ridge Street neighborhood, that was, I think, a 10-year life expectancy difference?
Oh, yeah, I think I saw that, too.
Yeah, too. So, I think it's, you know, you know, I don't know what people will come up with, but I just think to just focus on the neighborhood and get people engaged, and hopefully get them engaged in, you know, some different activities. And just overall would just be good. So, I like the, that was the first thing that popped in my head when you said the Ridge Street neighborhood, that data from MAP to Health.
Yeah, thank you.
So, then you have a steering committee that's gonna be guiding the process? Or is it, or is it staff gonna be?
So, the city is really over this process. Steering committee, though, is a mix of staff, youth, other volunteers, community members. So, but in honesty, I think the core staff group is gonna be myself, Matthew Murphy, Misty Graves, because she's amazing, and I hope she wants to continue. I think she does want to continue to do this. We have other staff folks that are helping out. So, on that end, we'll have that core group, internal group. But the steering committee really is a community group that's gonna hopefully be a group that can be consistent, and it won't change too much over time. I mean, if we can keep, you know, the community members on for a cycle, that'd be great. And then we'll figure out what to do after that. But I think this will be a staff-driven process for sure.
And can you give any examples of kind of ideas that other communities have kind of built because of this? Like, what kind of infrastructure or capital projects?
Yeah, and some of the...
What are you talking about?
I think one, so there were some examples we looked at. I think Greensboro, North Carolina, they had a huge, they had like 500,000 for several areas of their city, like each. And so, they did some pretty major infrastructure, maybe with some traffic infrastructure. So, with $100,000, again, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do exactly. It could be anything from a better bus shelter, or maybe we just pay for a portion of the bus shelter, and we, the city coughs up the rest or something. You know, maybe they want something that's like an installation of an artistic installation of some sort. So, I think we're gonna take any and every idea that we're gonna get from the community and put it together. But most of what we kept coming back to is how do we make it something that is visible in the community? That then they can then build from, or we could build off of in the future. And especially with everything happening in the SIA, happening at Friendship Court, that's gonna be happening in South First Street, it seemed to make sense that that would be the area that we start out with, so.
And you said, obviously, staff is gonna be overseeing it, but it really is community-driven.
Yes, it will be. We're just, I mean, we need to have some logistical, you know, we'll have the logistical oversight. I mean, we'll be, I guess the administrative oversight is what I was talking about. But this will be a community-driven process, and so we'll be letting them kind of take the reins, but kind of keeping the administrative side, just so we make sure things kind of stay on track, but, yep.
Thank you.
So, today, we don't...
No, I just wanted to make sure you all were fine with this. And if you are, then we're gonna use the calendar, and we'll keep you all up to date. So, we'll be working the summer on the engagement piece and the education piece, and then probably coming back to maybe later in the summer, early fall, with where we are kind of along the way, so. And as events start happening, obviously, we'll tell you all when those events are happening.
Thank you.
And the opportunities for you all to be engaged, because we want to make sure you all are engaged during this process.
And I'd just like to acknowledge Matt Slats, because back in 2014, 2015, when he was at the bridge, he was using arts, the arts, to do community engagement in the strategic investment area. So, I'm really glad that he's still involved now with this kind of new process, but it's still within a part of the city that's near and dear to his heart. So, thank you.
Yeah, well, I think him, too.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Any other business?
How do we land on that letter?
It's done.
Pressure court. Okay, it's done, okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Mayor Walker, I do think Mr. Kafuna did want to share one item with you.
Good evening again, councilors. As you know, every couple of years, the State Department of Transportation has a revenue sharing process. And we're gonna brief council about what staff is proposing to submit this year. But due to time constraint, myself and Dr. Richardson, we're unable to get that done. So, I wanted to provide an overview of some of the projects we are looking at submitting an application for the revenue sharing. And on July 1st, staff will come back with a full-blown report, you know, to the City Council with a resolution of support, you know, to enable staff to fully submit their application with the support from the City Council. I've got a...
Thank you.
Summary of... Does anybody have a copy?
Yes.
That's a summary of what we are proposing to submit for. It's gonna be a two-year application for 2021 and 2022. For 2021, we are looking at submitting for two projects. That will be East High Streetscape Project for signalization. As you know, we receive 5.49 or 5.56 million dollars for Smart Scale for East High and Lexington Intersection. However, signalization wasn't part of what was submitted for funding. So, we are requesting a revenue sharing to enable staff to complete a signalization of that intersection. And we also, the $2 million, 1 million will be from the city, and 1 million will be from the state. It's a 1-50/50 program. The state provides 50% of the funding, and then the city provides the matching fund of 50% as well. The other project we are looking at submitting an application for, for 2021. It's Route 250 Bypass and Hydraulic. We're looking at the extension of the Ton Lane, and that's gonna cost $300,000. And we'll be looking at 150 from the state, and then the city providing 150 match. Usually, the funding for city match comes from the Capital Improvement Plan. That's what we use to match the state funding. And for 2022, we're looking at submitting an application for multimodal improvement for $3 million. 1.5 from the city and 1.5 from the state. So, collectively, we are looking at 5.3 million dollars. Half of that will be 2.65 million from CIP and 2.65 million from the state.
And you're presenting this at this time because it says that the pre-apps are due July 1st?
July 1st. Yeah, so essentially, this is what staff is looking to submit. I want to brief the City Council, unless council has something on your mind that other than what staff is presenting. If not, then we'll go and have a placeholder in the state portal system. The state has electronic system where you can submit the application. So, we're gonna enter this project we just discussed in this evening by July 1st. And then come back to council with a presentation on July 1st and a resolution of adoption. And then we begin a full or detailed completion of the application. We have up until October 1st to complete the application, but the pre-application has to be done by July 1st.
Madam Mayor, this is like the last thing that I want to spend any time talking about. But it seems irregular to have this depth and complexity of issues come to us in other business with millions of dollars at stake here. It just seems odd, but I don't know what else to do about it, because...
And I do have a question. Was there no other time this could have been brought to us earlier?
Why isn't this a regular gen item?
The state changed the system this year, you know, and so we couldn't bring it earlier. Once the portal, we had noticed that the portals are now open. So, staff had to come up with this overview to present to council. And then we'll come back in the next two weeks for full staff report.
So, if there's no decision on this proposal, then we won't be able to submit the funding to start? So, you need to start the process?
Yeah.
I would recommend that because of the timing, because of how this is, that at least there be 2-2-1, or some conversations with council that are substantive between now and the next time when you have to make a decision, and we at least have some engagement with this that's not just a summary, one-page memo with a lot of different stuff going on here, and that we can engage with it more than five minutes, being handed it right now at 11:30.
And I'm curious and concerned about what other projects that aren't on this list, that these are kind of the opportunity cost of. Like, so why did these come to the fore? We've had this conversation before about the priorities of the Streets That Work Plan, and why some intersections are funded and why others aren't. And so, I don't have that context, so I don't know how this was derived by staff. So, I guess...
For instance, for 2021 project, we have, like I said, about 5.6 million dollars for East High and Lexington Intersection. And there is a need for signalization of that intersection. And the project is currently being designed, so we are requesting for Smart Scale for that. And this particular intersection is also on the street, on the list of Streets That Work Intersection Priority List. So, we are requesting for 1.4...
But we can't do this on the fly, and we don't have any background. We need some context and be able to have a conversation with the city manager about it and understand, and not make any, I couldn't give, I mean, on the NPO, when we...
We just want to have a placeholder. You know, this is not a full-blown discussion. This is just, yeah, the projects we are looking at submitting application. We're coming back with a full-blown staff report.
So, if you submit the pre-app, and then something needs to change, you can change that before October, or no?
If we submit a pre-app, we can't withdraw that, you know. However, if we submit several projects, you know, assuming council say, okay, in addition to this project, we want you guys to add this, 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 this. We can add all of them. But by October, you know, we'd be able to say, okay, we're not gonna be able to seek for them.
Do all.
Yeah, we're gonna remove some of them. So, we are allowed, we'll be allowed to remove some of the projects, you know.
And these are projects that are currently ongoing?
Yeah, these are the projects we consider priority that we can get. You know, sometimes you may have several projects, but they may not be fundable. But these are projects we know that will be competitive. They're on the city's either Streets That Work Plan, Comprehensive Plan, or what have you. And then if we submit it, it has a pretty good chance of being funded.
You know, I didn't, there was this kind of polling that was happening on council about whether we preferred Preston and Grady versus Cherry Avenue. I didn't feel comfortable with that happening on email. That felt to me like it should have been something happening on a council meeting transparently, because it's a significant decision that will shape the neighborhoods. And similarly, I don't think this is, I don't know what to do about it. But, I mean, like it says here, based on priority ranking and eligible projects, what are those? I feel like we ought to be engaged with that if there's a decision. If we're being asked to make a decision about something, then we ought to have full visibility into what got to this point, because it is millions of dollars that will shape the neighborhoods.
And it should be posted on the agenda and posted in a public way. Because, again, I felt very uncomfortable about that decision as well with the Preston and Grady intersection as opposed to the Ridge-Elliott-Cherry intersection.
And then it was... Wasn't the paper?
It was in the paper that was inconsistent. I was in the NPO meeting when it became very clear that VDOT really wanted the city to make a decision. And so, I'm seeing, again, kind of almost a repeat of a possible confusion and an ill-informed decision being made on the part of council at literally the 11th hour.
Go ahead, Alex.
The full staff report is gonna be published. This is not a staff report. This is just a briefing. Yeah, the project. The staff report is ready. It's ready to be published for the July 1st City Council meeting. Tomorrow is Agenda Discussion for city staff, and then that staff report will be provided tomorrow, or later part of tomorrow to the Chief of Staff for inclusion in the council packet. So, that is ready. It's gonna be a public information. This is just some kind of overview of the project we are going to submit applications for.
Because you have to submit them before we actually have a chance to talk about them. You said you have to submit them that day, the day that we come into...
Yeah, the placeholder for this project.
So, we aren't gonna have a chance to talk about them and make any influence, because you have to submit them.
We have to. We can put a placeholder for this. We have to midnight, you know, to close that.
Okay, well...
What we'll do, I understand the issue that we had before in terms of the project that y'all saw in the newspaper. And we said one thing, but you saw it differently in the newspaper. So, moving forward, we want to make sure that we get those projects to you in a much earlier timeframe, because this one has to be submitted in such a quick turnaround and timeframe. Alex could do the 2-2-1 to update everyone on the projects that he's listed. I think with these, these were considered in his scope of capital projects as priority projects. And he's listing to try to get the additional funding from VDOT. But we will make sure that's a priority to do the 2-2-1s, to make sure that you're briefed on the projects and why they are considered a priority. But we'll make sure moving forward that we do get this to you in a much earlier timeframe, so that you'll have a chance to really review it and make sure that it's considered a priority to you, too, in terms of the projects that we're gonna be providing VDOT for funding within the next couple of fiscal years.
And Dr. Richardson, I would request that, just to make it most efficient, before those 2-2-1s, if we're being asked to actually, like, we're being asked to do something here. So, if we're being asked to give some kind of, if we're being asked to interact or give an opinion about this, then the meeting needs to be set up that way. If it's just blessing the final result, then that's fine also, but it needs to be clear what the interaction with council is. With the NPO, we had this whole thing where they hadn't really given us enough information on this whole series of projects, and we had to do one more meeting where they then did present us a summary of each one, and then we were really engaged, and that was what everybody wanted, but it required a little bit more intention.
And I appreciate the history on that.
It's a different body, but...
And like I said before, we'll make sure you get it in a much earlier timeframe. Apologize for that, but we really need to move forward with this one. So, Alex, you gotta schedule the meetings right away.
And so, then making sure that, I mean, I don't have a, for me personally, besides unless the Preston, Grady, Fifth Street, whichever one wasn't ultimately funded or included, is included on this to submit to see, I don't have any strong opinions. So, I'll trust that you all have, you all know what, where funds need to be directed at this time, and I'll support this. So, I don't need one, and you can do 2-2s, and I'll just ask council to just make sure... So I don't need a one and you can do 2-2s and I'll just ask council to just make sure that you all are available because scheduling has been very difficult to get things accomplished. And if this, if they need to start on this pre-application, then we need to make sure that we make time for the meeting and so that whatever feedback you all want to provide happens.
I'm also in support.
I do need a 2-2-1.
And I want to make sure as we move forward in the future also, too, with projects that the directors deem as of paramount importance, that they are just providing it to the council and saying these are priority projects. I think that you were probably trying to give the council options in terms of which projects that they thought should move forward. But I think, too, through your due diligence and your communication with the community, you're the director, so you're the one who has the necessary experience as well as expertise and understanding of what the community is looking for in terms of your capital projects. So I just want to make sure that we have that communication with the council in terms of, you know, basically, you know, if there's projects that he's asking for, you know, your opinion on in terms of moving forward, but there'll also be projects where they look at from their planning aspect with, as a department as a whole in terms of which ones need to basically be moved forward when they call for these projects from the state or on the federal level or whatever it may be. But we want to move forward and have those communications with the council and then talk a little bit more about them when we talk, when we have our staff retreats and different things like that, as well as our budget planning process to be able to talk more about those various projects.
Okay, thank you.
And which one was this? Was this, were you asking us our opinion or were you telling us?
That makes more sense, what you're saying.
Or were you telling us that this is what staff deem as a...
Priority, based on the plans, like Streets That Work and Comprehensive Plan, Backped and what have you.
We'll just be clear on it in the future and we'll make those adjustments.
So you all are still...
Dr. Richardson, if you're, if you're, yeah, if your advice to us is, if there's not actually anything that we're being asked to do here and it's just to bless the staff recommendation that is, that's not like what happened with the Cherry, like, I just saw this, then I will trust, then that's fine. I don't really need to do another meeting.
And I think that's what happened with the Cherry Avenue project also. We just need to be, you know, make sure that we're, we're defining exactly what we're doing, whether we're asking a question, I mean, whether we're asking the council for their opinion on our projects or we're just basically saying, here's the ones that we find in terms of our planning that we have listed or slated to move forward for state or federal funding.
Okay.
I just want to clarify the confusion issue related to Preston and Grady and Cherry Avenue and Fifth. Staff didn't make the decision in a vacuum. It was VDOT that contacted staff and said, look, Preston and Grady and Cherry Avenue, the ranking was similar, you know, can you guys tell us which of those two projects you would like to proceed with? So instead of staff making that decision or taking it to the city manager, we decided we need to bring it to the attention of the City Council before we make that decision. And the window, the decision-making window was too short.
Okay.
You know, so we had to ask the city manager, can you tell council, here is what we are, the feedback we're getting from VDOT, so we can advise them accordingly.
The problem is there was an article written and it had a different decision made. And we have people in the community that now are expecting Grady to be done and it's not.
Okay, but they can't control the...
It was decided at a different meeting. It was said that was the one that got funded and it got published. So it created a tremendous amount of confusion and we got no headlights to that and that's where my frustration lies because I had to answer those questions.
I understand that, but sometimes I can't, staff can't control what the newspaper writes, you know, because there was never a vote by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. What they did was, okay, we have extra funding, what's the ranking?
So do you need a vote on this?
No, we don't need a vote, we just want to FY council, you know, we are coming back with full staff report on July 1st. But we just, we just want to let council know, here is what staff, after reviewing all the projects, you know, here are things we consider priority.
So the stuff down here about it is recommended the city apply for $1 million in local funding, that's, that's just a, like, that's not a decision point for us that we have to decide anything on, that's just a point of information as part of the briefing.
Yeah, we're going to bring a full staff report that we have a resolution out.
So are we requesting 2-2-1s or are we not?
No.
Okay, no 2-2-1.
I just don't, I don't love this level of stuff at the end of the night, I'm just being honest. I've like reached my limit tonight.
Okay. Agreed.
All right. So do you all want to meet?
But if you need clarification, we're here.
There is no action required. And in the future, I trust Dr. Richardson that you will get this to us earlier with staff and that, so that we can have more context when we're looking at these things and also the communications to the community are very tight and in line with what staff is recommending and what is then transmitted to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Because, yeah, it's, it's late.
Okay. And, okay, so I think, thank you. Just one quick thing, the Bridge Builder comments, you got all those comments for the West Main Street Streetscape? Did you get those earlier? But you'll have them, right?
The resolution. Is that what, the resolution that was adopted?
Okay, there.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Everybody's tired.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak? Community Matters?
I was going to, but then I'm looking at Heather's face. I'm going to send you an email. Good night.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, meeting adjourned.